All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 21st Board of Supervisors meeting for West Rock Hill Township. Would you all please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag? Thank you. All right. First on the agenda is, or should say, is there any public comment on the agenda items? If so, please state your name and address. Seeing none, I will move on to announcements. We will be holding an executive session after the meeting for open space and personnel matters. Anything else?
The only other announcement is that you have Wawa plans to sign after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on then to the consent agenda for April 16th, 2025 meeting minutes. The wind plan review, status escrow releases, emergency services report, building and zoning report, public works report. And then Greg, I'll ask you to read the trust report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The general fund is $1,602,863.47. Highway aid is $290,968.93. Open space is $1,381,452.50. The park fund is $89,076.37. The equipment fund is $24,886.80. Highway capital 146.6. Street light $37,752.80. The general fund reserve is $513,071.6. The ARP fund is zero. Open space Manderfield is $40,557.2. Sewage maintenance fund is $218,148.73. Stormwater fund is $151,534.55. And the escrow funds $808,198.2.
Are there any questions?
No questions.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just have it. Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is confirmed appointments. I do not have any confirmed appointments on here. So I will move to committee reports. Planning Commission report, Mr. Durstein.
Evening.
Good evening.
So Planning Commission met last Tuesday. We had one applicant. It was Moyer Romeo with a lot line adjustment on Lonely Road in the RA zoning district. They're proposing to convey 7.57 acres from the Romeo property to the Moyer property, resulting in a 19.47 acre Romeo property and a 17.9 acre Moyer property. The Romeo property is a vacant, primarily wooded lot, and the Moyer lot has an existing dwelling and outbuilding. No new construction is proposed. They're looking for a handful of waivers that makes sense. Planning Commission was on board with them. And we are recommending conditional preliminary final. And I think they are here to present tonight.
Okay, so. Question, what was the purpose for those lot line adjustment?
Honestly, I just.
Two neighbors getting together.
Yeah. Treating some land. You know, there's no new construction. Right. The amount of acreage falls well within what's needed in the zoning district, so. Not exactly sure why they wanted to do it.
You gotta cut across the creek in order to get to the other part of your property if the neighbor doesn't, so it's like, yeah. There's boulders and trees I don't need.
Right. Could very well be the case. So, and that's all I have. You don't have any other questions? That's all we had.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you. Alan, entertain a motion for approval of the planning committee's report.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Second?
I will second.
Okay, all those signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is parking rec. Mr. Dave Rice.
Park and rec time. Guess it was sunny out yesterday. Guess I should have put the suntan lotion on earlier. Get that.
It's okay, you fit in. It seems a lot of.
All good. All right. September Fest. Everybody knows when it is. Four months away. Four months and three days away. Where's countdown, right? 30th Annual. Across the street. No rain. Noon to four, September 28th. September Fest, 30th Annual. It's gonna be awesome. Getting the contracts all lined up. Greg's making sure, Greg and Sheri making sure everything's getting taken care of, so everybody's good to go. Ferris and Fifi, if I haven't mentioned a thousand times, they're gonna be there, so it's gonna be a good day. As well as we have a lot of actually really good events, a lot of good people coming to. And you know what? It's great because we have a lot of sponsors that are actually helping us fund the day. So it works out. Everybody that sponsors us, supports us, comes out and helps us. It makes it enormously great day, so it is really pretty cool. Future Film and Fire. Actually, we'll be talking about tomorrow night because tomorrow night's the parking rec meeting. So tomorrow night, seven o'clock, same place, same time, right here, right at that table. So it's all good. So we'll be talking about what movie we're gonna pick, what date we're gonna pick, probably usually the second Saturday in October it'll be, usually.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Isn't tomorrow night the third Thursday?
Yeah, like, oh, maybe this guy.
Because the meeting is usually the fourth Thursday.
I could be wrong.
Let's double check that, okay?
Or was it first on a?
It might have been. It might have been. That's why I'm asking because.
Oh, no, that's right.
Yeah. Well, it's the fourth, so you're right on the money.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, I thought I counted right because I looked on the calendar.
You did. I made the mistake thinking that this was the third.
It's all good. All right, sounds good. Future Film and Fire tomorrow night, parking and rec meeting. Unfortunately, we accepted Bonnie's resignation. I'm not sure I didn't ask. There's, I believe there was some personal issues, personal reasons, excuse me, not issues going on, so sadly, we accepted her resignation. But we do have an alternate, Bill Knowles. So I'd like to ask if we could promote Bill to a full-time committee member and then put the advertisement out for an alternate, if that's okay. If that would be accepted, that would be something I escort tonight. We have some projects going on. We have a new shed coming. It'll probably be the first or second week of June. That should be pretty easy despite the rain. The gazebo probably is gonna get pushed back basically because of, we can't get out there. It's a little too wet right now. So we're thinking maybe July. So it'll be here before September Fest, I'm hoping, please. And we have another project on the agenda which the Board of Supervisors know about, and I'm gonna ask for permission that we can move forward with the dog park expansion. It's a black chain link five-foot-high fence. It's 120 by 54. It is gonna sit, if you're looking at the existing dog park, it is to the right of it, the existing dog park. It's gonna have a 10 by 10 meet and greet areas to the dogs. If there's somebody coming in, the dogs can actually see each other on three different sides, so a nice meet and greet area. Two four-foot gates and then a gate, an eight-foot gate so that they can come in, they can, you know, take care of the lawn. So that'll be pretty cool. So that's the one request I have moving forward for at projects. I think that's all of them. So there's two things. So asking if we can promote Bill Knowles to a full-time committee member and then advertise for an alternate and then moving forward with the dog park expansion.
Okay. Any thoughts, all supervisor?
When's the dog park extension planned for?
That, it would probably be, it's two months. So we're hoping that was, is gonna be done by September Fest as well.
No problem with it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we appoint Bill Knowles to permanent committee member.
Thank you.
And advertise for an alternate.
Thank you.
Have a second?
I will second.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And Mr. Collingwood, are you making a motion?
Yes.
For the dog park?
Yes, I am.
Motion's made. I'll entertain a motion for second.
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye. I just have it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Dave.
Have good day.
Yep, we'll try to get some more volunteers.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for approval of the parking rec report.
So moved.
Okay, second. Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, up next, mission reports. Pen Ridge Regional Police, Mr. Chief Dickinson. How are you, sir?
Good evening. How are you?
Well.
I have your April 2025 activity report for the Pen Ridge Regional Police Department. Police Department responded to 870 calls for service in the month of April. 346 of those calls were in East Rock Hill Township. 515 were here in West Rock Hill Township. Nine calls were assisting our neighboring agencies. Department handled 19 traffic crashes. Of those crashes, 10 were reportable, nine were non-reportable, with four occurring in East Rock Hill Township and 15 occurring here in West Rock Hill Township. Our crimes for the month of April, there were four crimes against property, two crimes against persons, five crimes against society, and 14 group B offenses, which your group B offenses are your more minor offenses. These offenses include, in East Rock Hill Township, a DUI crash, a DUI, one harassment, two ordinance violations, a retail theft, a theft report, and two trespassing reports. Here in West Rock Hill Township, we had one hit and run, one DUI crash, an aggravated assault arrest, one burglary, two drugs, three DUIs, one fraud, two harassments, one ordinance violation, a sex offense, and one reported theft. So in the month of April, we filed a total of 19 charges. Those charges included one charge of hit and run, one charge of drug possession, one charge of possession of drug paraphernalia, one charge of indecent exposure, one charge of disorderly conduct, nine charges of DUI, and then all these charges were single charges. Aggravated assault, strangulation, terroristic threats, simple assault, and harassment. The other police activities for the month of April included 233 traffic enforcement details. We issued 104 traffic citations, issued 159 traffic warnings, conducted 23 school checks, 116 park checks, 81 business checks, and the officers participated or attended 307 hours of training in the month of April. So far for the year, police departments responded to 3,589 calls for service, 115 traffic crashes, 117 offenses have been reported, 101 criminal charges have been filed, and the officers have attended or participated in 722 hours of training so far in 2025. And that would be your Pen Ridge Regional Police Commission report.
Any questions for the chief?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Good reports of you speaking on the radio.
Yeah.
Yesterday morning.
Yeah, yesterday afternoon I was on the radio. Yeah, yeah.
Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, chief, very much. Well, I will entertain a motion for approval of the chief's report. All right, motion's been made.
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye. Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Joe.
Have a great night. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is the Joint Rec Authority report. Angela Gobin not here, I guess. So Greg, I'll ask you to read the report.
Sure, you got.
No.
Uh, the joint rec report, you got an email and it's in your packets. I'll go over some of the highlights. The pool manager has passed the CPO class. Pool painting has been done. The rec desk is up and running. They started using it on May 17th. Key tags and photos. They started handing out the key tags and taking photos for the rec desk system. Camp wristbands have been ordered and received for each camp. Also, the chase lounges have been purchased and be placed around the pool after the cleanup on the 17th. The diamond donate, the horse on April 17th raised $567. The flower sell went well. They raised $395 and they sold out within two hours. Next year, they plan on selling more flowers. To date, they have raised $11,293.35 in donations. Some of the events scheduled for this year is flick and float, July 11th and August 8th at 8:00 PM. The boat regatta, July 19th. Adult Night Out, August 16th. Memorial Day Parade lifeguards, May 24th. Perkasy Community tent, June 28th. Diamond Donates Bankers, June 10th. Chiara's, June 17th. A day at the pool to meet Ferris and Fifi and win tickets to an Iron Pigs game generously donated by Jan and Kevin Beets. The date has to be determined. The snack stand has been rented by Rita's in Quaker Town. Some unfinished business. They have the feasibility studies. They received three quotes and they are reviewing them now.
Any questions? I have, I was gonna say, I have a question regarding the minutes that I read that there was a purchase of a slide for $44,000. Now, a couple months ago, okay, I thought it said, read that it was purchased, but they're only looking into it. It hasn't been done yet.
Hasn't been done yet.
Okay, wonderful, because I think that's what Angela told us. They were holding off on doing that, and they were gonna possibly look for donations or fundraising to buy that. Okay, very good. So that's taken care of. The other thing was I requested a copy of the season passes being sold to track them, how many were done, and, you know, where the people are from. We haven't gotten that information yet.
We have not received that yet.
Okay, thank you. Which, they're working on that, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Actually, that's why Angela isn't here, because we are, the Joint Rec Authority is going to having two meetings per month until we get the pool open, so that way we have a shorter turnaround. So everybody who was, so our members are over there. Except for me.
I would like to ask the public and remind everybody that if you're really interested in making the pool a success, please consider purchasing a season ticket. Even if you don't use the pool, if you support the pool, buying a season ticket will help them financially. So just a little thought. Thank you.
Okay, I did have one other piece of information. I don't, I don't have the, I know we don't have the breakdown. But looking through the minutes, as of April 1st, we had budgeted night for sales of 99,000 from season ticket sales. On April 1st, we were at 6%. Looking through, by April 25th, we were at 51%. So, and we now have got another 30 days, so we look to be tracking pretty well for season ticket sales. So thank you, everybody who's buying season tickets.
Great. Thank you for that clarification, Al Stuck. Yep. All right, that being said, I don't have any other information. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the Joint Rec Authority.
So moved.
Okay. Motion's been made. Second?
I will second it.
All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda, North Penn Water Ridge Road closer update. Mr. Dan Preston. How are you?
Very well. Good evening to the Board of Supervisors and all present. I'm here to. Thanks for coming. You bet. So I'm here to give you an update on where we're at with this project and the effect on the road closures on Ridge Road. Good news to report is that we're ahead of schedule, so that's good news. We started back in February 3rd, three and a half months ago. It's hard to imagine, but it's been that long. We worked through a number of challenges and issues, but we feel we've made really good progress at this point. The borings under the 309 are done. Next week, we plan on installing main on Almont Road on the west side of Almont. That will have that main tied into the Sellersville system, so we'll be able to begin start filling that main. Now, there's about three quarters of a mile left on Ridge Road. That's it. We're expecting that we should be able to start final restoration beginning in early August. So we originally had forecasted an October completion date. We're now looking at a September completion date, like early September. So that's good. So that impact will be minimized at that point. So the other thing that I just wanted to bring up is just a reminder, we've, every Friday, we've been updating our, where we're at on the project, on our website. So if you go on there, there's an update every Friday as to where we're at in the construction progress, what we intend to do, or where we're working on the following week. So I think that's been really helpful. We've gotten a lot of hits, thousands of hits really, on that particular update page. So we know people are looking at it, so that's a good thing. And the other thing I just wanted to bring up is we have been approached by Noah's Ark Daycare. They currently have their own little water system, and they would like access to public water. I've directed them to Telford Barrow Authority and asked them to reach out to the township regarding potential water service. They would need to work with the township to iron out any issues or concerns with doing that. So we do have an agreement with them that, within their Telford Barrow Water Service area, that if there is a request for water, they need to run it through the township just to make sure there's no issues or concerns. And they would be a Telford Barrow Authority customer. We would just be the provider of the water.
I won't stop you there, man. Can you hear me back there? Okay. When you first presented this plan, I came to your meeting, public meeting. There wasn't any services being put in at that time. Just something that new, that came up new, the request? Or a connection? This was supposed to be a loop to get to the hospital.
It's a transmission main only, yes.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. So if you want to deny water service to Noah's Ark Daycare, go right ahead.
Well, we don't know what we're gonna do. I'm just asking.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, okay.
We, it's transmission main only. We committed to that. We also said that, in which the township received copies of, that if there was a resident that had an issue with public water, with their well, to contact the township.
Have you had any contact?
I had a few contacts, yes.
All right. So, you know, we haven't changed our plan.
Okay.
We're following our commitment to you, Jay, but we also sensitive to residents who may be in a distressful situation. So, you know, that's where we're at. But that's Telford's service area.
Correct.
So we're kind of, you know, in the background here because obviously our main would need to be tapped. Bringing this up now is because the project is ahead of schedule, and at some point in the near future, as I mentioned, we're gonna start final restoration of the road. And if there were any services that were going in, we want to get those in before paving, obviously.
That's why I'm bringing this up, because it would be very, very bad if you sealed that road over and overlaid that road and then it got dug up again.
Which is why I'm bringing it up.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem. And that's it. So it's really, it's really good news in that the contractor's done a great job as far as making good progress. And we appreciate the patience and cooperation of the residents of the township in dealing with what was, you know, a very impactful situation. We understand. We tried to make the best of it being that there's limited, you know, transportation routes and corridors through this area. So we knew it was gonna be impactful, so we've, we've really held the contractor to their 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM beginning and, I'm sorry, 9:00 AM. Sorry. 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, we've held them to that, and they're off, they've been off the road at 3:00 PM almost every day. There was a couple exceptions which were related to some construction issues, but for the most part, they've done a good job, I think, of getting off, having the road clear by 3:00 PM. There were some issues with the temporary paving. I think we've worked those out. I drove it tonight. We'll drive it again, and it's important that we keep that as in good a shape as possible and before we, you know, commence with trench and paving restoration. As you know, we committed to the township to do a full mill and overlay of that, even though our PennDOT permit it only, is only for half the road.
Right.
But we heard your concerns and your issues. We addressed it. We are committed to doing that full mill and overlay, so that that's gonna start in, like I said, early, that'll probably start in August, early August, with a take about three to four weeks to get all the road restoration done. It'll be like a brand-new road again when we're done.
Can you speak to the details of final, you talk about final restoration. Kind of, it's not known how, give us, what exactly is happening?
What is the?
You're gonna, you're gonna take out part of what you've already put back. It's temporary fill, right?
Right.
Talk about the process.
Yes, the paving contractor will come in, they'll mill out the existing trench that has the temporary paving in that, in that. So there's a certain amount of material that we put in there and basically prepares the road for a full mill and overlay. We'll then come back and just mill and overlay the entire road, just like a PennDOT project. And that's pretty much it. It's pretty straightforward process, I would say, you know.
You have an inspector on site, right? I mean, when that fill, fill is going in, the lifts aren't so great that in a year or two, it's gonna start to settle and.
No, we've had an inspector on site full-time for the entire project, and we will for the paving as well. Absolutely. It's the only way to guarantee that it's, everything's being done
Right.
properly, and PennDOT has been providing inspection as well, so it's a very highly inspected project up to this point, but I'm glad how, that we're doing that because it'll ensure that when we are done, we're gonna have a really good road again.
That's what we'd like to have for our residents.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for the update, Dan.
Okay, Jay.
Any questions for Dan other than that? Al? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, have a good evening.
Anybody from the audience have any questions while we're on this subject? I will entertain it. Seeing none? Okay. Very well. Moving forward, next on the agenda, tax collector's report. Suzanne Clark, how are you?
Okay, for the month of May so far, for annual taxes, I've collected $17,120.31. 2025 interims, $79.85, and our streetlight tax of $97.11. Those are my collection, but I want to let you know that I am getting ready for school bills to be mailed, so waiting for the millage update from Pembroke School District. I haven't received anything yet, so I don't know what's in store for us. However, we are preparing for it. As we speak, bills are being generated.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you so much. Any questions for Suzanne?
None.
All right, thank you, Suzanne. I will entertain a motion for approval. A report?
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is the engineer's report. Mr. Steve Bowles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item we have is the Moyer Romeo Lot Line Adjustment Subdivision that indicated, received the recommendation from the planning commission this month. Did we ever represent it?
You and I.
I'll let you give a little overview of the project. Yeah. Up on the screen.
Okay, so. My name's Robert Beers. I'm from Al County Associates. It's a simple lot line adjustment plan between neighbors. It's not affecting traffic, no new lots. It's nothing very interesting about it. It's just 900 foot section of land going to the neighbor, so.
Okay. I have any questions regarding?
I've, we've addressed all the engineering comments in positive. You know. Responded positively to each one. Most, everything has been already everything's been complied with. I think the only thing we have, we would have luck to do would be to set the monuments and the pims out in the field. We were asking for that we just set monuments on the three new properties. that we just set monuments on the three new property corners. And the right of way has quite a few points of curvature and tangents. And we were asking that possibly we just put pins along the right away the road and then and use monuments for the new lot corners. So I think that was the or just waiver that we were asking for.
I want to stop you there, man. Because I I get a little sensitive to some of that sometime. Are you comfortable with just having the pins instead of the concrete monuments?
Yeah, I think we'll have enough concrete monuments for what Romeo had done in their old plan and what they'll do on this plan.
The only reason I bring it up is a lot of times con or pins, rebar pins get pulled out or missing. And, you know, next owner down the road or something doesn't. Concrete monuments, they seem to stay in place really well.
The property land itself will have the concrete monuments on.
You're just talking about the road from these pins that you were talking about.
Additional right of way.
Very good. I'm fine with that. Thank you.
And I guess one other thing that I note is originally they asked for a waiver from dedication of the right of way as an easement. Land Commission recommended not to grant that waiver to require the right of way dedication as an easement, not visa.
Okay.
Yeah, we complied with that.
Okay, very good. Anything else, Steve?
No, other than more of a bookkeeping issue. At this point, you would authorize the solicitor to prepare a approval resolution for next approval at next month's meeting and your standard process. We need a thirty day extension on the review period to get us to next month. So if you agree to provide that.
Yeah, that's fine.
This week, then we'll be able to follow our normal process. Okay?
You you need a document signed?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right. You could send that tomorrow.
So we would need to, we would need a conditional denial.
Yep.
And a conditional approval to authorize the solicitor to do the approval. And so I would need two res- two approvals.
Approuvals. I'll make a resol- I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution to to prepare the denial for you to sign a new document.
Okay.
And then the second one was.
To authorize the solicitor to do the approval resolution for next month's.
There you go. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Got it.
And then I I think it was, I think you did the other Romeo plan.
Not personally.
Anyway, the the approval resolution, when it's prepared, will be sent to to your office and the property owner. If you agree with that, let the solicitor know. You don't have to attend the the meeting next month when they approve it.
Okay.
If you pre, you know, agree with the with what's in the approval resolution.
Very good. Thank you.
It's the most excitement that stretch of only loaded it's had.
Yeah.
So we'll cut to Romeo, now Romeo to the neighborhood.
Okay, sorry, just making a note here. The second item we have is the select properties lawn avenue phase one sewage facilities planning module. Now that is the larger development I'll call it on the north side of Ridge Road. Some people would say it's west. But this is not an approval of the subdivision plan. This is only approving the sewage facilities planning module, which says they will extend public sewer to this project. They've also cut down the area that's addressed by the planning module. We call it a phase one and phase two. Phase one is limited to the exact boundary of our current Act five thirty seven plan. So they're only asking for approval tonight to use public sewer to serve that development in the future within the public sewer service area that you currently have. The area outside would be a phase two, has nothing to do with any approval that you granted. They have gone through the paper, the appropriate paperwork. This has been sent and reviewed by the township planning commission, the Bucks County Planning Commission, Bucks County Health Department. There also was an advertisement in the newspaper, a public notification, which my knowledge, the township received no written public comments regarding. So they did all the preliminary work that has to be done. What would be required now is authorization to or motion to sign the resolution approving the planning module, sign the transmittal letter that goes to DUP. And should you desire, a cover letter could be included with any concerns that the township may have about the overall land development plan, since that's approval hasn't been completed yet. You know, you could instruct the town, the you know, administration to send a cover letter that takes something to the effect of the subdivision plan has not been received approval yet. There's some outstanding you know, zoning and and subdivision issues. And that your approval is only for this.
This is only for phase one, right?
Only for phase.
Okay, yes.
But I think we should, we should submit a.
I agree.
Okay.
And just clarifying for the record, this is a stretch from Lawn Avenue going over to Forest Road.
It's the Mountain View Road.
Yeah, Mountain View.
To Lawn Avenue.
Sorry.
And it's just short of Forest because all of the forest is phase two.
Right. Only it's only phase one. Let's clarify that.
Yep, right.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Buck. Should I? I know it is Mountain View. I'm interested in Forest.
Okay, no problem. So I I can entertain a motion for that approval of that, right?
Yeah, I guess this would be resolution twenty twenty five.
Like that, I like that motion.
Twenty twenty five, what?
Eleven.
Dash eleven, okay. Mr. Collingwood, you made the motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that will include a letter.
Yes. And that is all I have tonight unless there's other questions.
I don't have any other questions.
Anybody else?
I have no question.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the engineer's report. Okay. Motion made in second. All those signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you. All right, solicitor for Mary is not here tonight, unfortunately. So I will ask Greg to to help us along. And walk us through the solicitor's report with what we do have on the agenda for it, okay?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is a towing ordinance that's been advertised. On what the board would have to do is open a public hearing. I'll give a brief overview of what the ordinance is, and you take public comment. And then it's up to the board of supervisors then to vote on this.
Okay. At this time, I will open the township public hearing for the towing ordinance. Would you give a brief overview, please?
Sure. The township of West Rock Hill Township is considering adding a towing ordinance under our codification for to establish procedures for safe and orderly towing and storage of disabled or abandoned vehicles and establishing procedures for application in the maintenance of a towing license in West Rock Hill Township. What this is going to do is set standards. If the police need to call for an abandoned vehicle in the township or if someone's disabled and they're not not able to pick who they want as their own tower. Everybody has the right to choose their own tower, but if there's an abandoned car, the police department needs to know where it can be towed to. And what the board is setting up is standards. What type of equipment can be towed? There's an application to make sure they have the proper insurance. Also to make sure that the fees are not exorbitant. They have to sit, the board of supervisors will set the fees for towing and storage so that if somebody gets towed, it's just not a random amount that is charged to anyone that is disabled in our municipality. So those fees would be set in the resolution yearly. Is there anything else I should add, chief?
Okay.
That's more or less the ordinance.
All right. So at this time, I'll ask for any public comment regarding this matter? Seeing none? I will close the hearing at this time. And I will ask for entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made.
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, have it. Thank you. Okay. Moving forward.
The next item is that you have to open a public hearing on the compensation for members of the board of supervisors.
Okay. At this time, I will open the hearing, compensation for the board of supervisors. Would you please give an overview, Greg, of of what this entails?
Sure. The state of Pennsylvania authorizes how much board of supervisors can make in the state of Pennsylvania. The state legislature signed into law updating for population between five thousand and nine hundred and ninety nine that supervisors can make now up to annually four thousand one hundred and ninety dollars. If the board passes this ordinance, it will go into effect the next time someone is elected. So currently, none of the three supervisors are eligible for this. It would be the next set of supervisors when they're.
Okay, so that being said, is there any public comment on this matter?
How much do you get paid a year now?
Greg, you tell him, please.
Twenty seven or twenty five?
Twenty five.
Twenty five.
Twenty five, twenty five.
And and this the state increased it to forty one hundred per year, per year, that's for the whole.
Forty one nine.
We're not getting it.
You can't get it until you run again.
That's correct. None of the supervisors sitting up here can get that compensation until they run again. Okay?
I guess the only thing I'll say is there was some contention just recently when someone else was asking for a raise and it was not granted.
Don't know.
Well, they wanted a raise and it was not granted.
I think you're misunderstood. There was a raise granted, eight percent raise we did grant. Okay, just wanted to clarify, okay? Thank you. Okay, that being said, is, yes, sir.
For compensation, is there any health care benefit for anybody?
No. No. No, we're just following, we're following in guidelines with what the state awarded allowed last November or October, I should say it was, I believe. Any other public comment? Seeing none? I'll entertain a motion for approval on this.
I will also move.
Okay, motion's been made. Second, all those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
At this time, I will close the hearing. Okay. That's that should be it for the solicitor's report. Okay.
Right.
I'll entertain a motion for approval on the solicitor's report.
They're moved.
A motion's been made.
Second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving forward. Next on the agenda is the manager report, Mr. Lippincott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item is Planning Commission Agenda Procedures Resolution. Recently, there has been more and more cancellations for the planning commission. We'd like to set up a more formal process of applications going before the planning commission. We would like them to submit a letter to the township the last Tuesday of the month, giving the staff time to write their agenda. And so that they can pull off at the last second. Recently, we've been issuing agendas on a Friday and by Monday, all the applicants have canceled and then we have to cancel the planning commission. This also gives us more leeway. It actually states that in consultation with the chairman of the planning commission, we can limit the number so that the how many applicants are on at one time. Typically, three to four is okay, but if you get five or six, somebody will have to be.
Okay.
It outlines that. It also outlines them that they have to give the PowerPoint presentation ahead of time so that it can be prepared instead of that. So there there's some outlines of what needs to be submitted. That's more or less the gist of it.
Okay, I think that should happen anyway. The PowerPoint presentation should be given in advance anyway, so you can prepare.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, any, is there any discussion?
No, I think it's necessary. I think it'll streamline the process. I think it'll make, we won't waste staff time doing things that will never come to fruition because they can't go on.
Okay.
Come to the meeting.
So do we have to prepare a resolution?
There's a resolution in your packet. Alls you have to do is adopt it.
Okay.
Number twelve, two thousand twenty five dash twelve.
All right. So two thousand twenty five dash twelve. I will entertain a.
I'll make that motion.
Motion's been made.
I will second.
Second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, have it. Thank you.
The next item was taken care of earlier in this evening under the parking wreck. The next thing is the cleanup drawing. Every year, we do the cleanup drawing. I don't know how you want to pick the winners. These are for the adults. You have to pick two.
Al, go ahead and pick.
Hey, I. I did shuffle.
Okay. Should I announce it?
Go ahead and announce it.
No, they're different.
Your mic's on.
Amanda Wimmer and Christine Henderson. So one is a three forty forest. Sherry is a team captain. The other one, the team captain is Shane.
All right. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Then we have three applicants that are under eighteen and we usually give it to two. However, this is all one family. So if the board wants to award to all three instead of two, that's a decision.
I will make that motion that we did award to all three.
I'll second that for sure.
Al? Okay, very good.
We'll award it to all three members.
You want to read?
Who are they?
They are Chelsea Henderson, a three forty forest, Cole Henderson and Melanie Heston.
There you go.
There you go.
Congratulations. Job well done.
And that's all I have under the.
Okay. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the manager report.
So moved.
Oh, moved. Okay, second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye, have it. Thank you, Greg. Moving forward on the next on the agenda is old business, the ultra thin wearing course bid award. As you all know, we tabled this last month because we were, we weren't sure about, the bids seemed a little bit low and we didn't really recognize this company. So we we wanted to have some time so that Steve could do a little investigation on the company and type of work they do and and stuff, because this is something new we're trying. An ultra thin wearing course is to try and provide a little more life into the road as to as opposed to a complete overlay. So we're, we, as you know, we are trying, going to try this in three of the developments that we have down in the lower part of the township. So we wanted to make sure that we were confident with the process and that the contractor would be able to do it because everybody's road is. So we did that. Steve did some homework and feels comfortable with the the contractor, correct?
Yes, yes. They've done a lot of this work for, actually for PennDOT. It's where they've done most of this process.
And they just reached out a little further than their normal bidding zone because they needed paving work for their crews and happened to land this project. So with that being said, we now have to act on this. We either have to reject the bid or we have to accept it because we, our forty five days will be up before the next meeting. So at this time, does anybody have a preference on which way we want to go with this?
Steve, what are you, what's your thoughts?
I would recommend that you award the
Okay.
conditional on bonds and insurance, the standard requirements.
Yep. So I will entertain a motion to to move forward with this bid.
So moved.
Motion's been made in second. All those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good.
And just to clarify, because I'm sure somebody's going to ask, this is not oil insurance?
Nope, not oil chip. Ultra thin wearing course. And that is the way it is presented. I have seen this this in my travels with what I do every day, driving big trucks. And I have watched and and in the in the areas that I've seen this done in the past year, since the past year, they seem to be holding up very well. So I'm hopeful that this will gain us a few years' life out of the developments before a complete overlay would need to be non-mill and overlay, which is really what our objective would be. All township roads, we really are, we really want to try to do right when we do them. Just as, just like we did with the Ridge Road here, by by asking for the whole road to be overlaid when the when the project was done, so that we have a good road. Because roads are most, one of the most important things to the residents, getting to where you want to go. As we all know, how it was driving across the the rough terrain here of the of the patch job in the beginning. So that being said, that's the only thing I have on business. Anybody else have any old business?
The only thing I think of is, Dave might have to correct me, but we also had Bonnie Stump resign from parking wreck.
He stayed.
Talked about that.
Yeah. And we're going to advertise for 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 a new one. We we did appoint Bill Knowles into her position.
Yes.
Okay?
Yep, I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
I'm sure that I got it right.
Okay, very good. Moving forward then, new business. Anybody with new business? Nothing at this time. Nothing at this time. Al?
Nope.
Okay. All right, I will, I will move into a public comment that, is there any public comment? Yes, sir.
No, you go ahead.
Right here, right up here, sir, just, just so the audience can hear you and and the uh, the uh, mic.
David Taylor, uh, two thirty five Mountain View Road. Uh, my question is involved with the uh, item on the agenda with select properties on the phase one. Uh, I guess it's a sewer installation that they're planning on doing. Um, and, you know, I don't know if it's a better question to ask outside of the meeting, but what's the residence process to be involved in that, so that we can have input into how that's done, or the effects that it has on the road that I live on, for example? Um, where is that at, like, there's process that they just got approved, is that something that is involved with the planning commission and with the residents to be able to put input into this, or how does that work?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the engineer answer that question for you.
The, the approval tonight, what they refer to as a planning approval with the state, it only authorizes or accepts that they could extend public sewer to serve that area. The actual construction plans, wh- where the line goes exactly, what road improvements are done and how it's completed, have not been admitted or approved.
That's a separate process.
That's a separate process, which should go with the land development process, which got started, but then has been stalled.
Okay, and that's the part where the residents can then have input into that process, okay, I just trying to.
And that will be at future planning commission meetings at some point, when they submit revised plans and things.
Okay, all right, thank you. And you, and you should be able to pay attention to the planning commission agendas as you, as you look through, and if you have a question, call, call the township.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep, appreciate it, thank you.
Yep.
And the planning commission is on the YouTube, is on the Township YouTube site, if you to find out exactly what was.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, next uh, public comment, chief.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize, I forgot this in my report, June fourth, Penner's High School has decided to do their graduation at home this year, at Helman Field, so June fourth is the actual graduation date at six o'clock. If you do not need to go to Giant, or you do not need to be in East Rock Hill at that time, plan your, plan yourself accordingly, um, the rain dates are on the fifth and the sixth as well, so if there's rain and it gets postponed, just be aware that you're gonna have some traffic issues over there, that's all, so.
Thank you for that public comment, chief. Oh, okay.
Don White, um, I guess I want to make some comments about Allentown Road again, um. I'm really glad we got the uh, bridge situation uh, solved, and uh, the, the uh, give and take and debate was, was very healthy. Um, I think the one thing we all agreed on as that was going on was that we don't want Allentown Road to become a a uh, speedway. And I don't want it to either, uh, I don't think anybody in the township does, so Allentown Road in Tremboresville is twenty five miles an hour. Allentown Road in Tyler's Port is thirty five miles an hour. You know, um, we have an added danger on Allentown Road in West Rock Hill Township of the ten wheeler dump trucks that run up and down that road at forty miles an hour constantly. These ten wheelers can have a gross vehicle weight of eighty tons, and they're running that road, a road that has no shoulders and crumbling edges at forty miles an hour. I think we're just, you know, you're just begging for somebody to get killed, your airbags aren't gonna save you, you're gonna die if you get hit by an eighty ton ten wheeler. We also have the Village of Argus, and we have the Village of Ridge Valley, plus we have homes lining Allentown Road. This is not a rural area, there's homes all along there, kids and people playing. I would like the supervisors to start making requests that the state to lower the speed limit to twenty five miles an hour through West Rock Hill Township on that road. Um, there is no other way to control that speed but to lower it. Now, the issue with the trucks is, I I will agree, has been worse because Ridge Road has been closed, they've been running up and down Allentown Road instead, but there's still way, way too many of them, and it's not gonna change as long as construction's going on. The conditions of the road warrant this, this speed limitation, it is a narrow road, crumbling edges, sharp curves, no shoulders, and it's just plain dangerous. Um, I'd like you guys to consider, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it has to start with the supervisors, the the residents can also appeal to the, our representatives at the state, but it has to come from the supervisors to actually get the speed limit lowered, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for your comment, just wanted to clarify one thing, there is no ten wheeler that carries eighty tons. No, 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 that's a triaxle, Mr. White, a triaxle can carry eighty thousand pounds, okay, not eighty tons.
I don't know yet.
I I, I'm just clarifying, I'm just, I'm just clarifying your statements that you made there.
I looked it up and that's what it said. I just put in ten wheeler load in PA and it said eighty tons, I don't know.
Well, the information, the information is not correct, however, I will say, we ha- we are concerned about the speeds, and if you remember when I went through this fifteen, twenty, eighteen years ago, we did try, we had, to have studies done, and as a matter of fact, I think Greg will tell you, um, it starts with, we have to request a speed study uh, on, on that road, because, because it's a state road and PennDOT has to do that, but your comments were duly noted, and we all share your same concerns, thank you. Any other public comment?
We just chomped them in, and that usually sets the speed at the eighty fifth percentile of what people are driving. And then you can put that down a little bit for, for sight lines, narrow road, poor condition. But unfortunately, we're kind of stuck with negotiating first, finding out what's the average speed, and what's the eighty fifth percentile of what people are actually driving, which is usually nowhere near what the actual posted speed is, but some cases, some roads, but that's how we have to follow the rules, or that's the first part of starting to follow the rules in the process.
I just want to see sort it twenty five miles an hour and see if you can negotiate from there, that's all I'm saying.
Your, your comments were duly noted, thank you, okay, any other probably comment? Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, Tony Vogt, I'm Brad, I have a question, from my understanding, the North Penn Water, that transmission line, I I thought that was um, for emergency use, the hydrants in the hospital. I should have probably asked that when Don was here, but it, am I correct that that's what that was for?
It was a transmission line to the hospital.
For the fire hydrants, just so that they can keep it, they have to flush it every once in a while, and it also.
And I thought it was for the sprinkler system over at the hospital, because I I don't know how they could um, uh, tie in public water to that.
No, it's just their transmission line to get their water to um, Sellersville. Currently, they have pumps on Ayers Avenue to pump it up, with this transmission line, they won't have to pump it, it will be gravity fed.
Okay, all right, because it, I I'd seen, I was at the meeting before, and it seemed like it was clearly for emergency use for the hospital, that's why I don't, I didn't, the domestic lines coming in on it, I don't know why we were even discussing it now.
Oh, we had, we did have a couple of planning commission meetings where they had a study, they were showing that when you look at the new addition to the hospital and look at what's the hot fire hydrant flow that we are supposed to have, and it's, eh, we're gonna have, they may not have all of that, because the pump on Air Avenue, Sellersville Borough, their water system, uh, there was a catch basin on Catch Basin Road, and there's the the uh, water pond, and that's how they got the water, now they switched to wells, North Penn Water Authority runs off of Forest Park water. So, and this is, they bought this one little section of Sellersville Borough Water Service, it's not connected to any of the rest of their locations, so it makes it easier for them to have everything tied into one system, they can.
No, I I understand, I mean, it's in a loop, but I just was under the understanding that it was for emergency use, and it was, there was no domestic lines, they made it very clear that it wasn't intended for that, that's, that's all I'm, that's all I'm saying.
I I appreciate that question, um, I, however, I would like to say that we probably should have, reach out to Dan Preston and let him. I did ask for um, questions, you know, when he was here, and it would have been a good question for him to answer at that time. So maybe we can get that information?
That's fine, yeah.
From him?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, yep. Okay, um, any other public comment? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive sector.
So moved.
Okay, motion's been made?
Second.
Second, all those signify by saying aye. Aye, thank you all for coming and give me your input.